Vice Mayor, we are live. It is 9:07.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Friday, July 27th, pre-agenda meeting. Can you do the roll call, Ms. Melissa?
Yes, Mayor Betty Rush will be, oh, she's back.
Yay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm on my phone. Something's going on with my laptop.
My, my, same thing. I had to go get a different laptop.
Okay, when I hit the register, it said you've been invited to, and there's a list of dates, but there's no way to get in?
Oh, no.
That's weird, but, um, Madam Mayor, I was just starting the roll call, so Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony Sedgwick.
Present.
Well, good morning, everybody, and good to see you again. It's only been, what, 10 hours, 11 hours? That was a good, I mean, listen, you know, we have good discussions, and there's a lot to talk about, and I'm glad that we do have spirited discussions and came to, I think the result was a good one. Um, so, the agenda meeting for this week, I am now on my phone, so I'm gonna have to look up my agenda on my laptop. What say anybody? Does anybody have anything to add or to say, to comment about this upcoming agenda specifically?
I don't, I don't have a comment on the specific comment, content, sorry, but I did have a little bit on process, and that was that when I downloaded the meeting, the backup, I believe it was Monday, I noticed that there were several items that did not have clickable background for them, but they were on the agenda. And I raised that concern with the city manager because my understanding of our written rules is that materials have to have backup, which means that they have to have whatever the content is, plus a staff report that kind of explains what's the issue here. And that all of that has to be available by the deadline for the agenda, which I believe is Friday, you know, two weeks before or something or other, and if it's not completely available, it doesn't go on the agenda. And so there were things that were on that just had a name holder there, or they had some stuff, but no explanation. I believe somebody maybe can read the rules better than I can, but I think we've, I've heard a lot of, we have to follow the rules. So to me, the rule is very simple. If the backup is not complete by the deadline, it goes on the next meeting, or whenever the backup is complete, and it doesn't go on where you put it on and say, well, it's gonna be revised later, and we're gonna add it. Either we have those rules of a deadline, or we don't. If we don't want to follow them, then let's formally change the rules that we don't follow them, or get rid of the rule. I don't think that's a good idea. I think that it's very important that the public and the commission be able to see and read with plenty of time in advance everything, including, you know, staff report, the full backup. That's my comment.
Thank you. What about the agenda this week? Anybody have any comments on the upcoming agenda?
I would kinda like.
Chris, I can't see everybody, so I'm a little at a disadvantage here. So I don't, I can't see if anybody's hands are up, so please bear me a little.
Okay, but I do want some response to that from.
Well, we've all heard you, and I, you know, I don't know what specifically you're talking about, which item you're talking about.
It doesn't matter what the item is.
Chris, you know, Chris, I'm gonna say something. Your argumentative attitude is not helpful sometimes. If I ask a question, please don't bark at me, okay? I ask, do you have a specific thing? Because some things, I think, I don't disagree with you, but I think there are some things that come up that don't need quite as much backup. So that's why I was asking you a very simple, civil question. So, I mean, really, take, please take it down a notch, okay? We, I think that I don't disagree with you, but I also think that there are some items that the conversation, so that's why I'm asking you, do you have a specific example?
It was items, when the, let me pull up the other version of the agenda. I wind up, what I find I have, and it's happened a number of times, I have two versions of the agendas, because it always says revised.
It gets updated.
Yes, but that's not our rule. Our rule says if it's not ready for the deadline, it doesn't go on. Then it's not ready. That's why you have a rule. Either, and we've, I've heard from my fellow commissioners a lot, well, we have rules, and we gotta follow the rules. Well, I think the commission should be the first to lead on that. So it was on the version of the agenda that was available on Monday, it was items C and D. Nothing clickable, no clue what it is, nothing to do with it. And that means it wasn't complete. Shouldn't have been going on the agenda.
Well, I don't have, I don't remember what those items were. But, you know, I mean, and, you know, I mean, yes, we have rules, but we also, I mean, there are times where rules, you know, I don't know. I understand no one else's, I don't see anybody else's hands up, so I'm at a disadvantage. Okay, so whoever has their hand up, please speak.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, I do have a question from the original to the new agenda. What, the, and this is for staff, what happened to the appointment of the city commissioner to the issues forum? I don't see that anymore.
Yeah, that's supposed to be on.
It's not.
Um, Madam Mayor?
Yeah?
That was one of the items that didn't have backup, and it's on the July 15th meeting now that I have.
Okay. But I, and Mimi, just FYI, I did speak with the lady yesterday from that group, and told her that we were a little backed up, but she said, if any, you know, we can, whoever's interested can attend the next meeting to get up to date and then get appointed later.
You know when the meeting is?
Monday at 10:30, yes, I'll get, at Palm Springs.
All right.
But I'll get you more information about that, and I'll, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna look up and text you her number, her name and number, she's lovely.
Well, I mean, people might want it too, so make sure you.
No, 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 I'm saying, I'm, it's Monday at 10:30 at Palm Springs, I think Community Center, I'll, I'll look for more.
Please send it to everybody so that it is.
Yeah, I will, I will. That's what I just said. That's what I just said, I'm gonna email it out, so that, once I get it, I will email it to everybody, so you all, anybody can go, it's open to the public, obviously, so I will do that, if not today, over the, I'll try to do it today. I have a eye procedure getting on this afternoon, so I'm a little.
And the second, the second thing on the agenda, Melissa, what, what happened to the, was it the same situation regarding the landscape requirements?
Yes.
Okay, so, to Chris's point, there is two things without backup that are not on the agenda.
Right.
So that, I mean, it seems that unless it's time-sensitive, which I believe the inter-local agreement with Palm Beach County is time-sensitive because of the meeting on July 8th.
Yep.
That staff has been, has heard, you know, if the backup isn't there and it's not time-sensitive, then we push it, which I think is the appropriate approach. If it is something that is time-sensitive, sometimes you just have, we just have to kinda suck it up, but the other, you know, if it isn't, they're following the rule.
Yeah, that's, that's my impression, but I don't have the front of me.
I believe, I believe we have a provision for things not meeting the deadline, and I believe it's an emergency addition, and it has to be voted on or something or other. I would encourage that we at least put some sort of information, if, if, if you're gonna add it to the agenda, which I don't think you should if the backup's not complete, but if you are, indicate there was a time issue and give some explanation to people.
But I mean, all right, that's sort of obvious, I mean, that's, all right.
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
The city manager's hand is raised.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Also Commissioner Sedgwick.
Now, I can see everyone now. Mr. Brown, and I see other hands up, Mr. Sedgwick as well. So, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on the issues forum and everything, so, and speaking with Annie Jeski.
Right, I know she talked to you, I know she talked to you.
Yeah, yeah, so, so you got the multi-jurisdictional issues forum executive committee, which was the MICVAC you had mentioned before, but that's appointed by the league.
Right, no, this is for the issues forum. This, this is, this appointment that we're talking about is for, not the executive board and not MICVAC, but the issues, so the separate entity of issues forum, which is the collective.
Correct. Now, did she mention that we would have to appoint both a member and an alternate, which is what I believe Melissa put on?
Yes, she, yeah, member and an alternate. We, well, she said you can, you can have an alternate if you like, so I said, sure, why not?
Now, for, and I believe Melissa, for the 15th of July, we're going to appoint someone, so are we gonna have that conversation then?
Which conversation?
Who, who we want to appoint as a member for the issues forum?
I would, I would think so.
Okay. I don't know if you guys wanna make that decision ahead of time.
Well, we could, I mean, we could certainly, we have a little time now, we could talk about it. I'm, I'm not married to doing it, I think that somebody else should get involved with it. I know Mimi's interested in it. You know, I think, you know, so I mean, do you want, is Sarah here? I'm not, I hate it on the phone.
Yep, I'm here, I'm just listening.
Okay, I just, I'm on my cellphone, so I, I'm completely disadvantaged. What do you got? You wanna talk about that now? We can talk about that now. Anybody? Nobody? Okay, we'll talk about it on the, at the meeting. But it is the issues forum, it's not the MICVAC itself.
Correct.
Okay, so, and there, and it's, when I spoke with Anna yesterday, she said it was 10:30 on Monday at Palm Springs. Can, is, can you confirm that, Jamie? Do you have a way to confirm that?
Yeah, I'll send it out.
And would you send that out to everybody?
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it, okay.
And real quick while we're talking about those committees, there's also the IPARC, which is the Intergovernmental Plan Amendment Review Committee, which William currently serves on.
Okay.
They are now putting together IPARC 2.0, which is now gonna be planners, and also including those from transportation, that'll be reviewing the countywide transportation plan.
Right.
What they're about to do right now. As part of that meeting, we'd also like to officially appoint William as a member of that, since he's already on IPARC, the first one, and then myself as the alternate for IPARC 2.0, 'cause I'll probably start attending some of those once they start getting into the countywide transportation plan. I don't know if it's necessary, but we wanna make that official, probably do yours as well.
Anybody's comments on that? I, I mean, it sounds good to me. All right, Chris, yes, Sarah, yes, Sarah, are you for that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, again, I.
If I object, you'll hear from me.
Well, I, yes, I understand that, but an affirmative would be friendly. Mimi's a yes. Okay, yes, so that's, that's a go. You just ratify it on the 15th or something?
Oh, yeah, well, we'll have to have a conversation as far as who wants to be the actual member for the issues forum, if you guys wanna.
Right, right, but I mean, as far as staff, as far as you and William.
Yeah, that's fine, yep.
Okay, okay, Mr. Sedgwick, I see your hand, you've been very patient, and your hand is up.
Uh, thank you. So, you know, I agree with Mr. McVoy and Mimi. You know, if something doesn't have the proper backup, it shouldn't be on the agenda. My concern there is, what are the repercussions? It's understandable, you know, stuff happens and sometimes get pushed, but sometimes it's probably not circumstances that could not have been prevented. Sometimes they're, you know, so, you know, I don't wanna see us get into the situation where stuff just keeps falling off every agenda. There has to be some sort of accountability.
I don't think that's, okay.
Then on the, I had a thought on the, you know, the flags and the proclamations. Pretty much each meeting that we do, proclamations and such take about 30 minutes, plus-plus sometimes. I'm more of a fan of only doing city-related proclamations and, and, you know, recognizing individuals and departments and important stuff for the city. I understand, you know, there are national issues and wider issues. I just think we've got so much business to get through that it's, you know, I would rather see us spend that time on the more substantive issues of the city. In terms of flag raisings, I think that we should call ourselves lucky that we haven't had any controversial requests for that. I know a number of other municipalities have. And if we allow one group to raise a flag, we pretty much have to allow all. And, or we can get into some First Amendment things, and I think we've just gotten lucky that we haven't been on the radar, so for the flag, I would much rather us just stick to the state POW and American flag to avoid any of those issues in the future. Then the last thing I had, I just wanted to get consensus, to put on a future agenda, a discussion on e-bike regulations and golf cart regulations. Especially down near the beach, the e-bikes are getting a little bit out of control. They now have motorcycle-style e-bikes, and you can't even hear them when they come up on you, and there's, you know, groups of teenagers and stuff, you know, pulling wheelies and riding them, and people almost get run over. And I've seen a lot of golf carts that aren't street legal around. So I think we just need to have regulations on that for the side streets and so forth, so those are the three things I had.
Okay, thank you. It's a lot to, but we'll, okay, Sarah, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, I don't know if you could see it. Um, while I understand, and I appreciate Commissioner Sedgwick's thoughts, now is a time more than ever that I feel that we need to embrace our community and not segregate or start changing the things that we've done to embrace our community. And I think that that's what makes Lake Worth Beach special, is that we make sure that we honor those who ask us to recognize their uniqueness, what they contribute to in the fabric of our city. And I, for one, am happy that we have Haitian Flag Day. I, for one, am happy that we have the LGBTQ+ flag. I think that we need to, at this point, embrace our community and not do an about-face because the temperature of our country has gone in a far direction. I, I'm not in favor of having this conversation, so that's my opinion. I, I don't mind proclamations, it is hard when we have a lot of them, but at the same time, it's part of the good things that we do. When we honor that 90-year-old veteran, that made a point to show that we honor those who sacrifice for our country, and that we take that seriously, and I don't, I, for one, don't wanna stop that. Yes, we do have business to get to, but if we lessened our conversations and the rhetoric and the back and forth and the bickering, those conversations would go a lot smoother. If we had timed certain conversations, we would be able to get through our meetings a lot faster. It's not 30 minutes of proclamations that's making us not get to business.
Thank you, thank you. And my reaction to the thing about the flags is, on some level, I agree with you that we've been lucky, because, you know, what happens when the "we hate everybody, we wanna kill everybody" group wants to put their flag up? So maybe a compromise would be to have a list of those, or just some sort of guidelines, but I tend, you know, I'm in the middle of both of you. I think, yes, we are lucky that we haven't had the Nazis come and ask to have the flag raised, let's just say that. But, 'cause the First Amendment issues, I agree with you, we can't do content-related, you know, editing. But I do also like the fact that we celebrate our community, so perhaps what we could do is, you know, work on a list of things that, as a year, we'll, we'll do, so.
Well, Madam Mayor, what some cities have done is they have actually taken and listed what their official city flags are. So some cities have said, like, the Haitian flag is an official city flag. And they've, they've composed a list of what the official city flags are considered, and then that stops all of what Anthony's here is.
It's an interesting idea. I don't know that, okay, it's interesting. I don't know that we want all these flags as the official city flag, but that's a whole nother story. All right, Anthony, Chris, Mimi. Let's stick to one topic, let's stick to the flag topic for a second, just so we don't go all over the place.
Okay, I was just gonna touch on the proclamations, I wasn't suggesting.
No, let's, let's, Anthony, take a deep breath, we're gonna, let's, one at a time, so, oh my goodness. Chris, you had your hand up, and then Mimi, and let's, let's, you know, keep my idea of time, it's already 20, 9:30.
I generally support what Vice Mayor Malaga said, that I think it's important to honor different parts of our community. I'd say it's worth looking into that official flags, I agree with the mayor that, you know, official flag is kind of maybe a little strong, but maybe that's a good way to deal with the First Amendment aspects or something. So at least consider that, but I agree that it's important, both for flags and proclamations to, it is part of our business in the bigger sense of the community. Done.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That was very concise, I appreciate that. I like, I like to recognize good when I see it, Mr. McVoy.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mimi.
Um, this is a hard topic, because I do agree with both, both sides, as the mayor said. Is it possible, as a compromise, to erect a flagpole at the Cultural Center, or the Cultural Plaza?
I was thinking of a fourth flagpole somewhere.
Well, in, that we would, I, I have no idea if this makes any sense, but I'm just trying to think, 'cause I kind of agree that the official flag in front of City Hall be the, the state ones, but I don't want to disenfranchise anybody and have people feel feel left out, but I am afraid that, this is so hard, because I don't want anybody to feel bad, but, I mean, could we have a flagpole at the Cultural Center where we celebrate our diversity with the flags, but maybe don't even necessarily keep them up for an extended period of time? Or even at City Hall, we raise it, but we don't keep it up for an extended period of time? I don't know, I'm just trying to find a solution and just trying to throw out some ideas.
Right, which, and I thought about maybe a fourth flagpole, it's like at the corner of City Hall, something like that. But again, that doesn't solve the First Amendment, and now that it's been raised, we have to talk about it, the First Amendment issue, which you've never had a problem with, thank God. But if some, God knows what's going on in this crazy world. You know, if, if a hate group came and said we have a flag we wanted to raise, although, I mean, when we do it, it's an organized group, I mean, it's a conference, it's Haiti, it's Finland, but some sort of guideline.
There are organized hate groups.
I was just, as I said it, I realized, wait a minute, what am I talking about? There are organized, quite well-organized hate groups, I might add. But some of them are wonderful, nevermind, so, I'm, you know, I'm kidding, so. Okay, at the very least, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to have some sort of list, how, how we deal with the flags themselves and the poles is one thing, but I don't think it would be a bad idea to come up with a list, or whether it's official, or however we do that, so that we don't run into the problem of a group that we really, you know, that we can't, that we cannot edit for content coming to us. So I think that's a step in the right direction. And perhaps, maybe we should all bring our, you know, who, Madam Clerk? Do we have, I mean, what have we been doing over the past years? I mean, we can, if we get a list from the clerk of when we've done it, that would be helpful, and just see if we wanna either retract or expand that list, and then come to, like, this is our list of flags that are gonna go up and no others. That would, at least, and I'm looking at Anthony, you know, take care of the First Amendment issue right now, so.
Well, the list would be the pride flag and the Haitian flag, that's all we've done.
Okay, and then we could, you know, the Finns, you know, like, let's, let's think of groups that would, you know, that would, may come to us, and then make a list, and then, and that would be it. But even the list is gonna be, we have to be careful about the list, 'cause the list can't be content created either, so, I, how, where do we go from here?
Mr. Brown has just hit up.
Oh, okay, oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, I hate this. Okay, Mr. Brown.
Just something to think about when you guys are having this discussion.
Hey, Suzy.
The criteria that you're going to use to decide.
Right.
What flags or what, and that's where other places have ran into issues.
Right.
Say, okay, we're gonna allow the Finnish flag and the Haitian flag, and the pride flag. If there are others that come forward and say, well, I would also like my flag up too, I would like this added to your list, what criteria are, are all of you using to make this selection?
That's the underlying problem.
And that's the prob, and that's the problem. So I just wanna make sure I throw that out there before.
Um, that's what we're talking about, Jamie, it's, I mean, that's, that's the content issue.
Could we just say that it's, it's, Sarah, could we just say that it's, you know, these are the flags that we've raised historically, and we're leaving it at that?
Gay pride in Haiti?
Yeah, I mean, historically, those are the.
I thought we did.
I've never seen the Finnish flag flown.
Okay, well, then.
See that 10 times, Finnish flag flown. Um, but I just think if we do historically, and we have a track record that shows that this is what we've done, you know, it protects us.
That's not a bad idea.
The only thing I would add is that, you know, we have a big Guatemalan community here too, and it would, they have not asked to do that, but.
And they've been here a long time, and they never asked.
Right, but I think it would be kinda weird to exclude them, just 'cause we historically haven't done it. I would think a criteria that's based, do you have a significant constituent, and an example? I've had some requests from my wife, and I said, look, there just aren't that many Venezuelans in Lake Worth. I, I feel uncomfortable asking to do that for Venezuela, we, we don't have a big population of them, so, you know, I, I think, so I've pushed back on her. I'm still married.
Okay, Mr. Sedgwick?
On the topic of the, the, the flags, I think coun, country, flags of other countries are problematic. I think you could specify the pride flag, because Lake Worth is traditionally a sanctuary city for the LGBTQIA+ community, and we do have that policy there. We are not a sanctuary for other groups, right? So there is some official policy there, where I could see you could make the argument. I think as soon as you start getting into country flags or any other, other groups, for whatever reason, you really open the door wide open on it, so.
Thank you.
I kind of agree with that. I think it's tough to do the countries, I mean, we are United States of America, that's our flag. And I know that we have a lot of people that live here from other countries, but they've come to live in the United States of America. So we have, like, the Guatemalan dancers, they'll come and they'll, and they'll participate. We have the Finnish party at the park, there's, there's different events to honor those groups, where we don't necessarily have to put their flag up, the country's flag up. We're not honoring the country as much as we're honoring the people that live in Lake Worth Beach from that country, and what they bring to our fabric of our community.
Okay, so you wanna live into the gay, to the gay pride flag?
Yes.
I, I am strongly opposed to that thinking. A flag is very much a symbol for groups, if you're, you can't say, well, we wanna honor the folks that come from wherever, but you can't put your flag up, that, then you're not honoring them, because for many, many people, you know, I've dealt with groups from all sorts of different parts of the world, and the flag is something that's part of their, their identity, that, that's, it, so either you're honoring them or you're not, but if you say no flag, it's pretty clear you're not.
Well, I mean, there's only been one, there's only been one ask, you know, all, it's only been, it's not like people are clamoring to do this, it's only been the Haitian community. Sarah, what, let's just wanna go down the line.
Again, I think just historically, year over year.
No, no, I mean, would you be okay with just having the gay, the LGBT, the gay pride flag once a year?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I, I do agree with the fact that we have policy written to protect the LGBTQ+ community. So I like Anthony's thought process on the fact that we do have policies, so therefore we have, you know, a reason why we do it. I, again, just think that we have been raising the Haitian flag for as long as I've lived here, and I feel that, you know, we need to, I just feel like they're being punished because there might be bad apples, and that doesn't sit well with me. But, you know, I'll, I'll go along with the rest of the commission on, you know, what say everybody, but I just, I feel like they're being punished because they're maybe bad players.
Well, it's not punished, I mean, it's just, it's, it's, there are other, like, you know, Mimi said, there are other ways that things can be honored, I don't know.
But, you know, I like your idea, hang on, Mayor, I like your idea of having another flagpole, and maybe it's at the Cultural Plaza to celebrate the culture. And I think that that, instead of, you know, we take down the American flag and we celebrate the culture, that is the Cultural Plaza, I think that would be the perfect place to fly flags of, of other ethnic backgrounds and other communities, to show that, you know, we do celebrate the diversity in our city.
Let me ask a logic, a logistical question. If we were gonna have, if something like that happens, that means staff would have to go, I mean, if we're gonna have a ceremony for it, like we do at City Hall, which is fairly convenient, we would have, are you, are you suggesting then that when that happened? Okay.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just suggesting that we say, you know what, we can't do the typical ceremony like we used to, but we still wanna fly the flag, and we can fly it at the Cultural Plaza for the month of Haitian pride, or, you know, whatever, that.
But that doesn't solve the problem that does. But that doesn't solve the problem, that does not solve the problem, though, of the, the original problem of the first amendment, which has been raised, which.
Which is a hypothetical that, that has not in fact ever happened.
Yeah, but until, until it happens.
Right, but, uh, also keep in mind, I believe US law, federal law is if you're going to fly a flag. Of another country, you have to have the American flag and it has to be flown higher. So now you're looking at two flagpoles there, which I don't have a problem with.
Yeah.
I think leave it at city hall for a whole string of reasons. And we'll deal with, you know, the, the very occasional weirdness that comes along.
Uh, but what we.
I don't, yeah, I don't, no, no, I don't agree with that.
Dealing with it is not so simple. If you have something like, you know, I mean, I, a few years ago, the, the devil worshippers came and didn't invoke, I mean, it just. Anthony, your hand's still up. You wanna talk about the flag still?
Yeah, I had a suggestion. What if, what if we were to create a Lake Worth Beach diversity flag? Just like we have many murals that celebrate diversity. What if we had members or artists from the community design a flag? We could make it in some sort of a, a contest and we, we pick and create a diversity flag that honors our diverse cultures and history. And then that's an official flag that we can adopt and fly honoring our diverse cultures. And so even some of the smaller segments, like the Venezuelan segment and, and, you know, Guatemalan, the Haitian segment and so on, the Finns. All could be honored in that diversity flag and that way we don't have to worry about it's this country or that country. It's the Lake Worth flag.
No. It, 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 that's, that's kinda baloney is what it is. It, it, a flag is.
Mr. McFoy, Mr. McFoy, Mr. McFoy, that is not nice.
Yeah, let, let, Sarah, Sarah, I'll, I'll, I'll handle it. Um. That's, that, that was a very curt response. Um, and we've, we've given up hands apparently. We've, apparently we've just, you know. Um, so we all have different ideas and it's, um, I don't know that we're gonna solve this right now. I tend to. You know, I tend to agree with, we have a situation where we all, where we are, yes, we've been lucky and we have, we are vulnerable. And Chris, I think when you say we'll deal with it if it happens, it's, I mean, I think it's better to prepare for something like that because I, and again, given the. Tenor of the country right now, I would ha, not wanna have a group that philosophically, you know, we can't, we cannot. Select on content.
You can select on population in your community.
Okay, but that's.
We have a big LGBT community. We have a big Haitian community. We have a big.
Well, the one thing about the LGBT thing that I, that I think about is that. Cover, I mean, the LGBTQ plus issue is every nationality, every country. Everyone, every culture in the world, I mean, that's, that's something that's part of the human condition, whether you're Honduran or German or French or whatever. So to me, that is a blanket thing that, that we honor and, and then we, we take care of. I don't. You know, I mean, if, one thing would be, okay, we have, you know, we have our two official Haitians and, and, uh, gay. And that's it. We're gonna do that. And that's one solution, which might be kind of a simple solution because they have been doing it and that would be the cutoff. It's, you know, we've been historically doing it. That would be kind of a, um. Like the least controversial way to do it, I think. But, you know, so. Why don't we all bring this back to commissioner comments? Have, you know, think about it, think about what your solution is unless somebody wants to make, I mean, we don't vote here, but, um. Let's, let's talk, you know, let's talk about it a little bit more. We don't have a solution at this point. So, um. So let's just keep thinking about it. I don't know, but I do agree with, um. I do agree with, with Anthony about the fact that, you know, we've, we have been lucky. Um, Anthony, it's, it's twenty to ten, your hand is still up and now you wanna talk about. Well, you, you've brought your three issues. Does anybody else wanna talk about anything else? Otherwise, we're just gonna talk about Anthony's issues. Anybody have?
I was, I, I have something, ma'am.
Okay, please start.
I think that it's, well, I think it's really important that we all remember. That we are representing forty-two thousand plus people. And we are supposed to be held to a higher standard in the way that we speak to people, the way that we respond to each other and the way that we act in public. And for some reason, this commission continuously, no matter who's sitting up there, has to have rhetoric and disrespect. And I just don't think it's necessary. If you need to take a beat, take a pause, take some deep breaths. You can't practice yoga and then be rude to people. You can't say that you're Christian and then be arguing, it just doesn't show well for our residents. And I think that we really all need to, to look in the mirror at how we speak to each other, how we cut each other off and how we disrespect each other continuously. Including staff. Jamie was speaking earlier and got, got cut off three times. And I just, I think that we all need to reflect this weekend on how we treat each other on this dais and how we represent our city.
And that goes for everybody.
I just said, everybody.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Chris?
Yeah, this is not something that I'm happy with, uh, to be talking about, but I think it's important. Um, I just received. From what I believe to be a credible source, information that ICE, PBSO and Florida Highway Patrol. Will be starting a roundup in Palm Beach County Sunday and Monday, starting in Lake Worth. And there's concern that that's gonna target people in the community going to and from church. And I just want to share that information that we're all aware of it.
Thank you. It's going on all over the country. It's a terrible, terrible situation.
Right, but it's specific here.
Yes. I mean, wherever it's happening, it's, it's specific. Um, and we have very little role in that, I think. Anthony?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I just wanted to get, uh, consensus to get on a future agenda, um, e-bike and golf cart regulations. Um, like I said before, I think, um, you know, with the prevalence of the e-bikes and, and so on, um, the golf carts. Uh, it's about time that we had some ordinances that regulated that.
Yeah, I had, there was a presentation by one of the commissioners from Boca who's done a lot of research on this whole issue about the e-bikes and skateboards and stuff and. I think he would be willing to come out. It was a really good, short presentation at the Florida League of Cities. And I was wondering about inviting him to, to do a little presentation because it was just, you know, he's got it together. Um, would you be willing to have something like that happen to get the conversation started?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll contact him. I don't know when, I, I don't know if Boca has the same meeting schedule that we do. But, um, I can find out, but I agree with you. It's, it's become, I mean, it's, it's become a problem. And I'm driving down L Street last night. It's dark. There's a kid on a motorized skateboard in dark clothing. Going the wrong direction. It's very scary. Mimi, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, thank you. Um, are you sure it was Boca and not Jupiter?
Yes.
Cause I, I know Jupiter also had a situation, so we.
Yeah, they did. They've, they've come up with this. Either one, I mean, we can, and maybe what we should do is look at their ordinances just in preparation. Maybe we could glean. Something from their ordinances, but it'd just be nice to have, for the public to have like a presentation so that we know it's not just this thing that we started. But to raise awareness of it, because I think that's one of the issues that we have is awareness. That is, it's become a problem. So.
And I. I'm gonna try to say this really nicely. I do feel that the interrupting when people are talking is getting a little out of hand. Um, it's like I'm trying to listen to somebody talking and then, and mayor, this one's on you. You've gotta let people finish their conversations. You know, it's not a, it's not a conversation between everybody and you.
Right.
The conversation between all of us. Let us finish our thoughts because when you interrupt, what happens is I, for me, I forget what I wanted to say.
Okay, no, I understood. I apologize.
You're doing it right now. And then I would go on to the next topic and I've forgotten what I had to say. So please allow us to finish our thoughts. Cause I, I would love to interrupt everybody, but I really trying not to.
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you. Okay, what's up next? Um, the, Ms. Coyne has her hand up.
Uh, yes, I was actually gonna bring this up, but Commissioner Sarah did again. Keep in mind, I'm very literal, so when somebody asks for consensus for something, if I do not hear consensus. There's no consensus. So is there consensus regarding the e-bikes? I, I heard from Commissioner Segrich and the mayor, is there consensus to? Add something, if you get in, let me know, I can add a presentation to a future meeting and then add the topic as well. But I only.
Something.
I only feel I heard from two of you.
Consent.
Uh, I'm, I'm fine with adding presentation and topic for discussion. The only comment I would put in is at least some of us who are going to make decisions about it eventually. Need to be people who use electric bikes. I've learned a lot in three months of having one. I never had one before. I biked. You know, for decades, but the electric bike experience has been eye opening. Um, there are definitely concerns, safety concerns, but as we formulate our rules, let's make sure there are people who actually use them. That are part of that discussion also.
And golf carts.
Same makes sense. I don't use golf carts, so I don't have anything too intelligent to say about them.
Thank you. Melissa, your hand is still up. Do you have something else?
I'm sorry, let me lower my hand.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
You're muted, Mr. City Manager.
I, I had two things. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm going, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, um. First, first, uh, and I kind of alluded to it a little bit last night, but we've, uh. We, we've got an issue. We, we've always been pretty, pretty free flowing here as far as, um. You know, elected officials going directly to departments and department directors and everything for information and all kinds of everything. It's gotten to a point now where there's so much, um, information being requested and so many lists being generated that things are getting behind. And a lot of times that doesn't even come through the manager's office. So Troy and I will be asked about something, hey, I sent something over to, because we don't always get CC'd on everything. I'm depending on who it's coming from. And we'll be, hey, I asked for information, you know, X amount, like, uh, uh, two weeks ago through, we don't know about it. So we, we're gonna get with Shona and we're gonna, we're gonna set up a, a little different process here. And see if we can now start filtering everything through the manager's office. So we have a way to kinda almost like a work order or a task order system. Track all this stuff. We have time and date stamps on all of your requests. We know exactly, we'll be able to actually divide that by department, be able to push that to that department, know exactly how long it's taking to get stuff. And it just, it, it's just gotten to a point where it's, it's really gotten out of hand and we're getting pulled in so many different directions. And so many things are being generated and being asked for. And some of those things really need to come up in a meeting like this one. Because it's something that we should really have consensus from all of you on, if it's gonna take. A, a large amount of time to put some stuff together. So. I just wanted to kinda bring that up and just let you know that Troy and I, we're gonna get with Shona and we're going through applications right now, um, to fill that position permanently. Um, but that really needs to be a function that that job is going to work on. And you guys will actually be able to utilize that executive assistant as you really should be utilizing it as like basically your personal assistant. And filtering all that information through them and then kind of, that way, I, I think it'd be a lot more organized and efficient way. To kinda move through this, so stuff doesn't get lost in the shuffle. And we're all aware of what we're, what we're looking for. So. I wanted to bring that up unless someone has an issue with us trying to put something like that together.
Any responses?
Uh, I'm surprised because I haven't requested much of anything in months, so I'm surprised to hear it, but, um.
I said, well, Anthony has his hand up, Chris, so please, um, Anthony, are you responding to that?
I thought you asked for a response.
Yes, sir. Um, I, I, I agree with what Jamie's saying. Um, I've, I've actually looked into a number of technologies that work with our current, um. Systems, because we have the, the government cloud. It's a highly secure system. Um, my, my concern would, would be if we, we bring anything offline. Um, uh, in terms of sunshine law and public records, um, request recording of, of that information. So, um, I'd be willing to, to help out and lend any of my expertise that I've found, um, for the various systems that would help in, in. Implementing such a, a tracking system, um, for these kinds of requests. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, let me get my glasses on and see another hand. Mimi?
Actually, Sarah was first.
Oh, Sarah?
Thank you. Um, I do agree with Jamie. Um, I actually would also like, I think that's great for follow-up. Because a couple of months ago, um, I had the gentleman who does the. Um, beach buckets for garbage pickup came and did a presentation to us and we gave consensus, um, to possibly have that. On our beach and nothing happened with it. So I think by doing this, we'll also have a follow-through system to bring things to fruition.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. May?
Um, thank you. I agree with, I agree with this and I think that, um. I, I can understand how frustrating it would be for staff, so I do think that we need to make sure that we have the system in place. Um, like Sarah said, it is nice to see the full circle. You know, a lot of the times we, we put something forward that a resident has brought to us and it's just a forward. And then three weeks later, or in my case right now, I'm getting texts every single day from the same person about the same issue. And it's not staff's fault at all. It's just the way that it is right now. And, um, it would be a lot easier if we didn't have to have, play telephone. Is kind of how I feel like I'm doing between staff and this resident. Um, because I want every, I want him to be happy and I want him to be feeling heard. But I also know that staff has a lot of things to do and they don't need to drop everything for this one particular thing or whatever the particular thing might be. Unless it was something life threatening. Um, the other thing is, I agree with Sarah, like we. Sometimes we say, yes, let's do things and then we say, well, wait, what happened with that? And, um, so I think that tracking things like that where we all say, okay, we have consensus, not just putting stuff on the, on the agenda. That's easy. Melissa follows up on that expertly, but like the bucket thing, like something like that. And I think that it makes it more transparent and more, um. Less resentment, less resentful. And I think on all across the board, because I'm sure staff is resenting commission and commission is. Sometimes resenting staff and that's not the way we should operate. We are a team. We are here to support the residents of the lake, of Lake Worth Beach. And the more efficiently we can do that, the better. Plus, if we're each putting in something and we see a pattern. Then, then it becomes maybe a bigger issue that a department specific can, can say, you know what? We are getting a lot of these resident complaints. Maybe we need to change our policy about X. So I think it's a great idea, City Manager.
Thank you. I wanna, I agree completely and I think it's also a good idea that, you know, it's not a violation of the sunshine law to know which, what each one of us is interested in. And just so to, so for us, each other and also for the citizens, it'll be public record to see what each commissioner is, is interested in looking at. We had an issue, you know, a while back with, you know, people going directly to the, to the staff and that did not work out really well. So I think this is a good policy, um, to institute. So I'm, I'm for it.
Yep.
Okay, so thank you. You had, you had something else?
I had one other thing. So we've, uh, received a request. So Benny's Ocean Walk, um, the Benny's that's actually in the casino building. Um, is about to put, uh, well over three hundred thousand dollars into their space with, um. Uh, they have, I think they're in three of the five air conditioners, um, ceiling work, just a lot of renovations. Um, I think it's actually closer to four hundred thousand dollars. Um. They, if you recall correctly, took over the Mulligan's lease, um, back in twenty twelve. And then there was a first amendment in twenty sixteen and I thought it was, uh, in twenty twenty was Laplais. So it kind of, there were multiple amendments as least we're trying to dig through that, trying to figure out where we currently are. But the current lease basically went from twenty twenty to twenty thirty. So they have about four years left on their current lease. And they have two five-year renewal options on top of that after twenty thirty. The ask has been, since they're about to put this much money into this space, which basically they have about four years left on their lease. Would it be possible, because they're looking at basically being closed from Labor Day, which I believe was September first, beginning of September. Um, through mid to late October, so six to seven weeks, because they're gonna have to close down while all this happens. And trying to get all this done before season starts. What is the city's, um, temperature on waiving the rent payment for those two months? Since they will be closed and have no revenue coming in.
What is the total of that?
Uh, I believe it was twenty. Twenty-six, four-twenty, I believe is what they pay a month for. What's that? Fifty-four or fifty-two and change? It's gonna be like, um, a little over fifty thousand dollars would be the impact. Tell you exactly what it is.
Sarah?
Thank you. And I, I can understand, I mean, I just spent thirty-seven. Thank you. And I, I can understand, I mean, I just spent $3,700 on my building, air conditioning last week. And unfortunately, my landlord, you know, he's like, well, that's your building, it's your conditioning. Um, but I can understand this request. I do support it only because they are investing in our building. And because of the length of the lease that they still have. And this business is a good city partner. Um, they have a good track record and I think that that's a good return on our investment.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Segrich?
Real quick, Madam Mayor, I, I did forget to mention that, um, this is stuff within their space. So it's nothing that the city would have had to take on ourselves. This is work that if they were going to do, they would have to do themselves. It's just a matter of they're going to have to close down to do it. So I just wanted to make sure it was clear that, that this is not something that per their lease terms, the city would be doing ourselves. It does fall on them to do anyway.
It's more of a courtesy.
Yep.
Uh, Anthony?
I would agree with what Commissioner Malaga said. Um, a lot of times, large scale fixes like this, there's tenant improvement dollars involved and, and so on from, from the landlord. I think they, they are an excellent tenant and a good partner to the city. Um, uh, so I would be in favor of giving them the, the rent abatement or.
Okay, Mimi? Thank you, Mimi.
I don't know. Um, I guess I will go with the majority here on this. Because I think that the, the investment will outweigh the cost. So, I don't know. I, Jamie, does this have anything to do, will it affect the, um, if somebody was to, to take over and renovate the space above them? Does that have anything to do with that at all?
No.
Okay.
This is within, this is within their, the Benny's Ocean Walk space.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Chris?
Interesting how we worry about exceptions, um, for flags and things. And, um, we worry about the finances of the beach and how we can't just be giving things away. Um, my understanding of restaurant business is it's very typical that restaurants do build outs. That's part of that. That's not the landlord, that's them. And you figure that out in your business plan, how you're going to do that. Um, I, I'm not comfortable with that. I, I'm not comfortable with that out of fairness to the other tenants of the building. Um, I don't think it makes sense, uh, uh, the, the argument that there's a good return on investment, there's, there's not. They have a contract to pay us rent for X amount of time. There's no increase to us. There's a loss to us. And we're, people are regularly complaining that the beach building is short on money. Um, the upkeep is not as good as we would like because we don't have enough money to do it. Um, and so, but people are saying, you know, the commission is apparently saying, sure, go ahead. Don't pay us rent. I don't know. I, I don't.
Because you're no.
Comfortable.
You're no. Yeah, I mean, Benny's brings so much, I mean, they're, they're like our big attraction when they're getting so much. So I would, I would allow that to happen. I would vote to let it happen as a courtesy.
Right, so what we need to have, we would have to do an amendment, um, for that. So what I'd be doing is putting that on a, a future agenda to bring that forward for all of your approval. I just wanted to bring that up now before I even bothered going forward something like that. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Sorry.
Yeah, Mimi?
Um, just can, when you bring it, um, forward, Jamie, can you make sure that it's time certain?
Yeah.
That, for example, if we agree, you know, we'll waive two months, but the project takes three, well, we're not going to waive.
Yes, ma'am.
Or how about a month and a half? If it's only going to take a month and a half, maybe we could.
Whatever, whatever the situation is, when you bring it to us, please make it be time certain.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, I see it's 10 o'clock. Um, I think that's the end of the.
I would also like to have one of the representatives from the organization there, the day that we do this amendment.
Sure. Okay, so, um, it's 10 o'clock. Have a wonderful weekend, everybody. See a couple of you at the ball tomorrow night. And, um, stay, stay happy. Have a great weekend.